Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, August 26th, 2024. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone, and I hope your August is coming to a good end as we start school and we wrap up the summer. Could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Kenter.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Bess Coughlin.
Here.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Mary Beckwith.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep. Thank you very much, everyone. As a reminder, this meeting is being videotaped for rebroadcast, for live broadcast, as well as rebroadcast on Dartmouth Community Television, as well as our own DHS TV media channel. As always, we thank Mr. Parodi, our high school television production teacher and his students, for supporting these meetings, as well as all the other televised events. At this time, we have allotted 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's addenda items. So we'd ask you to please approach the podium if anyone would like to speak, and we ask you to keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Don't all speak at once.
Seeing no takers, we're going to move on from public comment, and Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the regular session minutes of July 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noon, second by Ms. Amorall. On the motion, any further discussion? Chairing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of July 22nd, 2024.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Noon, the second by Ms. Beckwith. On the motion, any further discussion? Chairing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Motion carries unanimously. I thank you very much. Next up, under all business, preliminary FY26 budget. Update on budget discussions. Dr. Saban McGuire?
So I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. Kylie, but just a quick reminder that this budget item is going to be on every school committee agenda moving forward because we think it's so important to keep everyone informed as we move through this process this year. So I know Mr. Kylie has some things prepared that he's looking forward to discussing this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So following our July 22nd school committee meeting, discussion on the budget, we had a budget subcommittee meeting August 5th. We had some discussion about process and how we were planning to move forward, and based on that discussion, I'll be preparing a few things. So number one is I'll be preparing a level service budget that reflects what currently exists, based on our funding in fiscal year '25. And then I will be incorporating our strategic plan and the key initiatives that are in the strategic plan, and making sure that we can fund the action steps necessary to accomplish those. I'll also be incorporating budget information about recent cuts. So in the last couple of years particularly, we've had some cuts to the budget, so that we can understand the impact of those cuts and what it might, might cost for consideration in hopes that we can restore some of those cuts possibly, as well as some historic information about cuts that have come through the years that, that, you know, may be things that we should consider. So I'm going to be doing all that. Our next budget subcommittee is, meeting is scheduled for September 30th, so I hope to be able to accomplish the fiscal year '26 preliminary, very preliminary budget by the end of September. There's lots of balls in the air right now, so there's lots of stuff to do, but that's, that's high on my list because obviously it is of great importance that we get an early start on it so that you folks can begin considering our options for to move forward. So that's, that's where we are with it at the moment.
Well, thank you for that update, Mr. Kylie. Questions from my committee members? Comments? Thoughts?
Real preliminary.
Very preliminary. And I would just add that, excuse me, that as we continue to work towards, you know, developing and drafting, actually not us, but Mr. Kylie was developing and drafting these numbers, that we do want to start thinking about come September, early October, about what the committee's pleasure would be with moving towards an override or looking to use, utilize our reserve funds. And I'm not ready to speak any further on that tonight, but I think it's certainly worth another discussion at our next meeting.
Okay, so I just put out on the table what my understanding is, moving into FY26 budget, that because we're losing the Essar funds, which is $200,000 for the summer programs, above what we used with school choice funds, which was $1.8 million, it would bring it up to, we'd need to fill in $2 million. And it looks like we would have that if we used all of our school choice and some of our, is it all preschool money? Is that a fund?
Yes. Preschool revolving.
And then we had talked last.
For stabilization.
At some point.
The full day stabilization fund.
Thank you. Full day, okay, yeah, I should, oh, full day. And then we had also talked about, do we want to keep in reserve any money? And there was some discussion about how much would be appropriate. And I actually don't remember if it was in the last meeting here or if the budget subcommittee, but 1% seemed to be maybe a minimum that we should keep in reserve.
Yeah.
And it seems like, so if we account for our school choice and our full day fund, we would be able to make up the budget gap for one more year and have that reserve. And it does seem to me that we need to make that decision, like, probably a deadline of the next meeting if we don't want to make it today.
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah. I feel like we're still not prepared for the community to be ready to decide, and I think we should wait another year because we do have the funds to cover it. So I'll just, that's.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Noons. No, I was going to say, at this point, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I'm still digesting all the facts and the numbers, but I certainly agree with you that I think maybe the committee should set a deadline for our next meeting to make a decision and formally decide to utilize school choice funds to subsidize the FY26 operating budget.
What I was going to say also is I think we have to kind of wait until Mr. Kylie gets some preliminary FY26 numbers and kind of see where we are with that level service budget and, you know, list of cuts that have gone down and that type of deal, to see exactly where we are and what, if anything, we are short. You know, even trying to use school choice and also, you know, that full day kindergarten stab fund type of deal. Because again, at some point in time, you know, that well is going to dry up or there isn't going to be enough, you know, in there, as Mr. Kylie showed us during, during the spring, to augment whatever we need.
So you recommended, Mr. Noons, that we, we wait for Mr. Kylie to come back with the numbers before making a decision?
That would, that's me. That's my opinion.
Okay.
That, that's my opinion, because then at least we have, you know, we know exactly kind of where we are. Again, realizing that it is very preliminary because we're four months ahead of the game at this point in time with trying to do a budget without state money, without the town, nothing of that nature. So I think if we just wait for Mr. Kylie to give us his best guesstimate, which I know will be pretty good, okay, to, to sit there and say, here's where we are, you know, here's what we've got in school choice, here's what we'll have, we've got X in, full day kindergarten stab fund type of deal, put the two together, all right, that kind of takes care of '26 for argumentative sake, but now we're, we're dead in the water for '27.
Right.
Just, again, just my thought.
So my understanding is this is a very busy a time of year for everyone in the school committing, including Mr. Kylie, and he probably wouldn't have that information by the next school meeting.
No, I understand.
But maybe by the following one, and if we should decide that we don't want to use all those funds or those funds won't meet the shortfall, then we're, again, in this very tight, constrained time to plan, move forward, educate.
No, fine.
I don't know. I feel like we know it's going to be at least as much as this year plus.
Yep.
Nope.
Ms. Amorall.
Yeah, I, I know that, well, I believe that, like, even just state budget based off of federal numbers isn't until, like, the new fiscal year, right? But what is the implication, or do you have sort of a forecasting based on this being an election year, you know, just in general? I notice the state sort of, like, tightens its purse and worrying about, and I understand that that's just something that happens in, in, in every, you know, national election cycle. So do you account for that, or do you have data to support?
Well, I, I think that it's actually going, from a, from strictly a school aid standpoint, so from Chapter 70, which is only a piece of the aid that the town of Dartmouth gets, and it's much harder for me to predict government, you know, government aid than it is to predict Chapter 70 aid, but Chapter 70 aid will be relatively small. It will be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars at the, at the best, not going to solve our problem. Now, unrestricted government aid could be different, but it doesn't typically go up at a, at a very high rate, and I don't see any reason why it would. For us, the Student Opportunity Act is in place and being implemented, so there is already a formula. The only variable in the student, as it relates to Chapter 70 aid, is how much the legislature wants to set the minimum amount of increase per pupil, in which this year it benefited us $100,000 with their, you know, their decision. So that's what we're talking about, is maybe at best a couple hundred thousand dollars. So not going to solve, you know, the problem.
Anyone else?
That's my two cents.
No, I certainly appreciate that, everyone's input, and we'll, we'll see what happens. But I guess from, from your standpoint, Dr. Saban McGuire, as well as Mr. Kylie, is there, is there any sense on, or any urgency on us making a commitment, from your standpoint, on using, utilizing our reserve funds before, after you, you are able to put together a preliminary budget, Mr. Kylie?
So from my perspective, the urgency would be that if we were going to proceed to, so if we were going to, if the committee's desire was to not use the reserves and to move forward with a budget that didn't use those reserves and contemplated, I mean, your decision cannot be to ask for an override, right? That's not within your purview. But to move forward with a budget that we need all of these funds in our operating budget, that would have to happen soon. So because the, the planning and timing for if the town were to consider an override would need to begin pretty early, it's possible that that could wait maybe, you know, till November, maybe. But they would have to start planning because it would, it would likely involve a town meeting that doesn't currently exist. Depending, there are options, and I can, what my plan was, after I prepare this, these numbers, begin to talk about our options in terms of, obviously, use of reserves, but then if we are considering something like an override, there are options too, that the town can proceed with different methods of timing. So one can have an election before a vote, or you can have a vote before an election at town meeting. So there are different options, there's different advantages to doing it in different ways, and, and so, I mean, we'd talk about that at some point with the town administration. But remember, we don't have a town administrator in place right now, we don't have collective bargaining agreements in place, our strategic plan is not yet finalized, although it's in great shape, it's coming up right there. But, you know, so, so there's a lot of things right now that are sort of somewhat challenging.
Lot of balls in the air.
There are.
Yeah.
There are, so, I don't know. But we'll make the timing work.
Right. Okay. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns? All right, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Kylie, for that update, much appreciated.
Welcome.
Under new business, I'm going to turn over once again to Dr. Saban McGuire for highlights.
I know, nice segue into talking about strategic planning. So we've been talking so much about strategic planning over the past year, so to get to the point where we actually have a draft to share with the full committee is really an exciting time for us. We actually got a chance to share some of the strategic plan, or the proposed plan, I should say, with, with our faculty and staff today at our convocation. I had mentioned that we were going to have that opportunity at our last committee meeting. So, so far, you know, again, good feedback, but what we have up here on this one slide, which we're particularly proud of, is what we're calling our dashboard. And what the dashboard really provides us with is an opportunity to look at the entire plan at a glance. And so what you see here are, what we hope the committee will agree, will be our new mission statement, our vision statement, you see our four strategic focus areas, areas, and our core values. We're really proud of the way the core values came to be in a way that was so incredibly collaborative, and you can see that pride stands out as sort of the acronym for what represents the Dartmouth Public Schools. And so I normally don't like to read off a slide, but I think it's important that, that we share the mission, the vision, the strategic focus areas, and our core values. Anyone who's ever been part of drafting or writing a mission, vision, and core values knows that it is, it's a complex process, and it involves a lot of different voices and, you know, quite a bit of editing and coming back and sharing ideas and tweaking. And so I just want to say, as far as the work that was done on this mission, this vision, these core values, that the voices in the room were really strong. I know a couple of our school committee members participated in this process, and they can attest to the work and really the thought that went into developing this. Every word was painstakingly, and I say that in a, in affectionate way, but we did go over every single word in a way that was painstaking, and I say that because people spent a lot of time thinking about what this was meant to represent for the community. So our mission, together with students, staff, families, and community, we are committed to cultivating a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment that empowers all students to become compassionate, informed, and contributing, contributing members of our local and global community. So a really powerful statement. And at our September meeting, when we come back and present in more detail, we'll talk about what exactly the mission stands for, and I don't mean stands for, but what it should communicate to the community. Excuse me. Our vision, united as one Dartmouth, we are invested in the ongoing improvement of our community. Dartmouth Public Schools proudly offers unparalleled opportunities leading to educational excellence and success for current and future generations. That to us was a really powerful statement. We spent a lot of time on this one, and on all of them, but in this one in particular, we really got caught up in individual words and reminding people that a vision is an aspirational statement, and it's where we want to be. And so in five years, we want to be able to say unparalleled opportunities, and that word meant a lot in making this particular vision statement, one that was really powerful. Our core values, pride, and again, I say, I say we engaged in this and we're really proud, and yes, pun intended, that the acronym PRIDE stands for, or is the acronym for our core values because it's all about Dartmouth pride. And throughout the entire strategic planning process, one of the, I would say, strongest sort of emotions that people shared was their sense of pride in the community and in the schools. And so for, for P, we have personal excellence and responsibility. R, respect for self and others. I, inclusivity, equity, and belonging. D, you see that we have D1 there, so One Dartmouth. Diverse opportunities and student agency, voice and choice. What I love about that one is, again, you can hear the student contribution to the development of this plan, and it shows right there. And apparently, today, a convocation, I left off the E. That's because it's a silent E, and I was a second grade teacher. But I thought I would mention it here. So an E, and anyone who knows or has heard the things that I'm most committed to, ethical commitments, is one that I certainly hold and really value. And so that's something that the entire team of people, again, 37 folks that were involved in developing this work, I do think walked away with a real sense of, of pride in the work that, that we were able to accomplish. Our strategic focus areas, I mean, mission, vision, core values drive this work, and there's your work, there is our work. Teaching and learning, and you'll probably remember this, because these are the strategic focus areas that we presented when we presented our entry plan findings. These were exactly what the community communicated to us as to what the areas were that they saw as a, as a school community that we needed to focus on. And of course, teaching and learning should be first because that's the heart of the work that we all do, but we know safe and supportive schools are necessary in order to accomplish that. Family and community engagement is something that we heard loud and clear from, not only from the internal stakeholders, but external and our families communicated through, if you remember, the surveys that we did, the focus groups that we had. All of those opportunities inform what you see here on this, on this dashboard. And finally, as we were just talking, budget and capital improvements. I mean, we can't, we're excited, and at the same time, you can't help but be a little, you know, anxious about putting forth a plan that we believe is going to lead the district into, you know, the next, or through the next five years in a way that will absolutely bring us to the point where we say we, we do provide unparalleled opportunities, but we definitely need to pay attention to budget and capital improvements. And so what we'll be doing next at our second, second school committee in September is providing you with, well, before that, we'll provide you with a detailed plan so that each of you will have it before the next meeting, and then we'll do an overview and, again, get into more details as far as the focus areas are concerned and what the initiatives are that have emerged within those focus areas, action steps that need to be taken, and then, of course, timelines, and then we'll talk about that connection to budget because it's an important one. And so this is our, hopefully, our dashboard, our proposed dashboard. We're really excited about it. Again, a lot of different voices are represented here.
Thank you very much. You can certainly see that a lot of time and thought was put into this process, so thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire, as well as all the, your staff members, as well as, I'm not sure who it was from this committee, the two of you, thank you for representing us. So I'm sure there's a lot of voices at the table. Comments, questions for my colleagues?
I'll start, yeah. I, I love this dashboard. I love, you know, seeing it come to this point.
I want to acknowledge we're working on that D.
I was looking at that, but just a little down, a little, maybe a little bigger. It looks good, though, it looks really good. I, I, what's most exciting about this is that I, I don't want to presume, but I, I just am excited to imagine how every student, every educator in our district can see themselves represented in this. It's great. Yeah. Love it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I love it, too. I love how succinct it is, and having been through a number of strategic planning processes in my lifetime, I know how, what kind of wordsmithing goes into these brief mission and vision statements. So I, I, you know, you can see the, the sweat and tears in it.
There were tears, thank you, Mary.
Yeah. So I do love it, and I love to, I'm so interested in seeing the rest of it, what, you know, what's behind all of this.
Thanks, Chris. I'm watching, I'm looking at Mrs. Poveo and, you know.
She's a wordsmither.
She was, she was the word, she was the wordsmith. We'd, you know, we'd sit here and we'd, we'd come up with something, and it was already there, and, you know, Mrs. Poveo would be sitting there, and somebody would make a change, and she's making the change, and somebody's like, no, that doesn't flow, change this word, you know. When Dr. Saban McGuire says we went almost one word at a time, that's exactly what it was, type of deal. I am very, you know, very, very proud personally of everyone that was on that committee. Everybody had a voice. Our three students, I know I've said this before, but they were just over the top. They, they weren't afraid to say, to speak their minds politely, type of deal, you know, give us their input, what was good, what was bad. You know, everybody else was there. I mean, I, I think about the strategic force, focus areas, type of deal, and we were in here, and, you know, there's four big sheets of paper that everybody's, you know, and everybody started out at a different group, broke into four groups, everybody started out at something, and we're moving around, putting our, putting our, you know, two cents in and making change, not making changes, but just listing them, type of deal. I mean, everybody worked hard, and, you know, everybody had a say, and, you know, the consensus is what, you know, came about, and, you know, the facilitator would sit there and say, okay, are we good, thumbs up, type of deal, and move on. So I seriously thank everyone for the time that they put into it. This was not, it's not what I envisioned when you asked me to be on this. I had never been on one before. it's not what I envisioned when you asked me to be on this. I had never been on one before. But boy, I enjoyed it. It was a lot of work, but it was well worth it.
Thank you.
So I'd never worked on a strategic plan before either. And I will say, I was impressed with everyone on the committee. Was it 27? Is that what you said?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. So imagine if you have a school project and there's three of you, you don't always agree. Thirty-seven people, we didn't always agree. But parents, community members, teachers, administration. I was so impressed how everyone did have something to say and felt comfortable when they disagreed with everyone. And everyone listened when that one person disagreed. So I really believe this does speak for the people who are involved in these schools and the community. I think it's great.
Well, thank you everyone for your feedback and thank you both for being on this. This is great and I'm looking forward to the, to the full version at the next meeting. My only question that I have is that I'm thinking, putting on a parent hat and for our parents out there is how, will you, do you plan on presenting this in a way in which it gets out to the parents? In which, how does this affect my son or daughter, right, in, at that level? So I'm assuming at some point in time that we'll be able to, you know, very clearly see how it'll affect this student that's in this, in this classroom.
I think that that's a great point. And that came up during our district strategic planning process where we were asked, how are we going to communicate this plan out once the school committee considers and votes on it? What we will be doing as a team is we'll be out in the community. We'll host several family forums in different ways. Community forums, actually. One of our family members suggested that we rename it from family to a community forum because we want to invite the greater community in to hear about what the plan is and where we're hoping to go and, and how the community can help support us in implementing a plan. That's pretty ambitious. And yes, we want to make sure that our families hear, not just our families, but the greater community. I think about our last finance subcommittee meeting, Mr. Oliver. One of the finance committee members asked sort of a similar question to that, right?
That's right.
Asked about how is what you're planning going to be communicated to the public? And how are you going to be able to measure your progress toward meeting the goals that you've set? And so that is something that will be part of, and you'll hear us talk about that in more depth in September when we're, when we're presenting the plan more in its entirety. But there will be a lot of opportunities to meet with, with the public. Myself and our central office team will be going out to PTO meetings. We'll be talking to families and connecting in that way. We plan on attending at least one PTO meeting at every one of our schools. Again, hosting a community forum and really putting things, taking advantage of, of technology and making sure that we're pushing out links so that people who may not be able to be present at a meeting can just easily access the information. So, and, and then looking for certainly feedback from, from the public and being able to answer those questions so that things are really clear to people. So that's going to be, that's one of the most important things that we'll be doing.
Awesome. Happy to hear it.
Yeah, great.
So just throwing this out there to my fellow colleagues, my, my thoughts would be because this is such an important process and yet there, whenever, if it's the next meeting or the end of September, our next school committee meeting that this will be presented at in more detail, I would personally like to send an invite to our fellow committees, our finance committee, as well as our select board. Because a lot of times that we, we hear from them that they're unaware of things or they hadn't, didn't have a chance to, to follow up and see the, see a meeting. So I think it may be worthwhile. Let's, if that's all right with everyone else, I would just ask.
That's great.
The more the merrier, especially again, take a step back and we were just talking about the finances. If we need an override type of deal, here's what's going to kind of drive, you know, drive that bus type of deal. So.
Right. No, I certainly agree. We always appreciate fellow committee members coming out to, to listen at our meetings. But if we could get a personal invite out to the select board and finance committees, I think that might go a long way. Perfect. Thank you for that. Looking forward to the full version.
I know. We are looking forward to sharing it.
All right. Continuing on superintendent's update.
Okay. So there's a lot to update, but I am going to invite Katie and Mrs. Paveo and Dr. Tebow up to the podium because they are going to be sharing some information with you about some of the summer programming. And again, I'm going to make this connection as I talk about these things. Summer programming, budget, right? So these do have real implications for planning and for what we're able to offer the students in the Dartmouth Public Schools. You're also going to hear them talk about some of the curriculum work that's happening in the school district. And there is a lot happening in the school district. And what you'll see when we present the full strategic plan is how integral that curriculum work is to, we're already working the strategic plan. And we just want to make those really clear connections. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Tebow and Mrs. Paveo.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. It's our pleasure to kind of give an update on the summer. We really do run a comprehensive summer program here in Dartmouth Public Schools. We offer, you know, a lot of times we think of summer school, right? And we certainly offer credit recovery and that's an important lifeline for our students who don't meet with success during the school year. But that's just one small part of the summer offerings we have. We also have enrichment. Things like the robotics camp, which ran three times for a week each time and really was student driven and student led. We have all of the athletic camps that were coordinated by Coach Lassie this, this summer that were well attended and provided our students an opportunity to stay active throughout the summer. You know, there's the ESY program, you know, certainly the Acceleration Academy, which Mrs. Paveo will talk a little bit more about in a second. But when it all is said and done, we service well over 200 students, if not closer to 300 students just on the academic side of things. You know, that's not counting those athletic camps and other things. So I certainly want to thank the teachers and faculty who, you know, again, a lot of times we think teachers, oh, they have the summer off. That's just not the case. That's not accurate. We had, you know, just for the small credit recovery program, which serves 75 high school students, we had five summer school teachers. So I really want to thank Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Bedad and Mr. Mayall. They, they worked tirelessly all summer and then that was coordinated by Mrs. Grieve. So we really appreciate their efforts to make sure that that went, that went smooth. The other thing I'd just like to acknowledge before handing it over to Mrs. Paveo to talk about the Acceleration Academy. When you put all that together, most of those activities happen right here in this building. So we really owe a huge debt of gratitude to our custodians who have to get this building ready for tomorrow, for Wednesday, really for today. You know, when you have two, 300 students and all of the staff that are here, it really makes it challenging to strip the floors and wax the floors and get the classroom furniture in and out of the rooms and whatnot. But our custodians did a phenomenal job and so we certainly appreciate them supporting, making the, the high school the hub of activity throughout even the summer months.
Thank you. And so in addition to the extended school year program that runs through the Office of Student Services, and just for the distinction, we have students who on their individual education plans have an extended school year. This is not what we're talking about. So this is in addition to the students that we have identified that need services throughout the year. We also ran, in addition to credit recovery at the high school level, an academic summer school for students in grades K through five that was focused on reinforcing grade level skills of the grade they were leaving. And so these are our munchkins who are leaving kindergarten, all the way through our kids who are entering middle school. And we had 105 students who were signed up for that program and worked for four weeks on those grade level skills. And then we were fortunate again to write and receive a grant from the state of Massachusetts on the, actually it was through ESAR, the Acceleration Academy, which we were able to run a one week camp. And it's a K to two on early literacy skills, K through, sorry, three through eight on ELA. And then three through eight in grade 10 in math. And we serviced about 175 kids that one week. Where we had kids come in and, and work on those targeted skills in math and literacy. And so that is a really great opportunity because we accept rising kindergartners. So we have these little munchkins who are there very first. Before they get to go to real kindergarten, we call it like a, a real sort of crash course in school. And so they have those backpacks. They come to this building. Actually, this year we were able to do it at the middle school and get a little bit of a taste for what school will be in just a few weeks. And so I also would like to echo Mr. Tebow's thanks to the staff here at the high school because it was, it's, it's a lot to have the kids here when they're trying to get all that done. So Mrs. Klune and Mrs.
Church.
Mrs. Church ran our Acceleration Academy. Mrs. Klune also oversaw our summer school, ESY and academic summer school program. So a lot of gratitude to the ladies and the staff who were able to make that happen. And so we're going to transition, I think, to talking a little bit about some exciting things that we have going on in the 24, 25 school year. Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
One of the things that you'll see when we talk about our strategic plan is the real emphasis on high quality instructional materials. You've heard us talk about it before. We will continue to talk about it. And starting with our elementary ELA program, I spoke a little bit about it at one of our previous meetings. Our curriculum team has been vetting different programs throughout this school year. And they settled on two programs, EL Education and CKLA. And they are going to be piloting that program K through five. We have a K through five teacher in each of the elementary schools who for about seven weeks until October 18th, they're starting with EL Education. Last week, we met at the Quinn School in the community room. We had reps from EL who came out and did a targeted training with the teachers to get them ready to roll. EL Education does four modules throughout the year. So the teacher's going to be teaching that very first module of the year. And then in that time, they also will have folks from CKLA come out, give them some training and do a training, a pilot rather, from October 21st until the end of the, of the calendar year, at which point they will kind of get together all the facts that they've gathered and teaching those two and make a decision about what we will do for full district implementation for the fall of '25. In conjunction with that though, we are providing professional development for all of our elementary teachers around the science of reading. Sort of agnostic of a program and not connected to a program, the real sort of nuts and bolts around the science of reading, which will ideally grow our capacity, but also really build the why and the understanding of why we're going in the direction of a new reading program and really help us to get to the place where we can really do some good professional development around the program and have a really successful launch in the fall of '25. And also, we have two third grade teachers and two fourth grade teachers who, it's not every day that I like to give a ton of credit to the Department of Education, but I will today. So when you're looking for high quality instructional materials, social studies is a very difficult place to find published, published curriculum. And the reason behind that is that most states have a very state specific curriculum. And it doesn't make a lot of fiscal sense for companies to publish state specific curriculum. So the Department of Ed actually got together a group called, it's an investigating history. They have rolled out curriculum, they were doing a little backwards. They went seventh and they're rolling back all the way to third and fourth. There's a third and fourth pilot this year and we have four teachers across the district who spent two days each in Worcester last week at the Wustock Stadium doing some professional development around that program. And so we're very excited to see what they bring back to their colleagues. They, they are very excited about it. And it's a great opportunity for us to really look at some really high quality. It's rooted in research and inquiry. And it's really, really exciting for us to see what the kids are going to be doing.
Thank you. And so we also have a number of different curriculum related pilots happening at the secondary level. First one I want to talk about is Open Saiad, which is at the middle school. And Mrs. Deekus and some of the science teachers at the middle school last year really spent time looking at different science programs that are available and that align with the shifts in the next generation's science standards and, you know, the, the ever changing landscape with, with how our students are actually assessed for their science knowledge. And so Open Saiad focuses on inquiry based science approach. It also focuses on the importance of simulations and things like that, which is exact, that's how the new assessments for science are tracking in that direction. And so Mrs. Deekus and the science, some of the science teachers at the middle school have undergone professional development in Open Saiad and are going to be looking to pilot one of the modules this coming school year. And with the hope of if all goes well, pursuing a grant and perhaps implementing fully Open Saiad in the, in the future. World Language spent all of last year. Again, very excited because it really was vertical, one of the strategic planning pieces of feedback that came from the community, loud and clear, is the importance of vertical alignment. And so with World Language, last spring, we brought together two world language teachers from the middle school with four or five teachers from the high school to really examine Spanish curricular resources that were available. And so they said, that team settled on SOMOS, which is a proficiency based world language curriculum. So it is a shift, you know, when we all learned world language, we probably learned in a traditional way where you're focused on grammar and spelling of words and conjugation of verbs and things of that nature. This is a little bit, it's more aligned with the updated world language standards and it's proficiency based and really focusing in on, you know, conversational Spanish and making sure that our students, yes, learning the culture, but they're doing it in a way where they're also able, where they're also able to converse in the language. So SOMOS will be being piloted this year at both the high school and the middle school Spanish levels. And then finally, we continue our math pilot. Last year, we piloted into algebra by HMH to examine that. That was this team. Again, we had representation from the middle school as well as the high school. We examined a number of publishers, a number of different products that were out there. We looked at illustrative math, Reveal Algebra I, both of those by McGraw Hill. We piloted last year into algebra by HMH. This year, we're going to be piloting Carnegie and we're excited because we're doing it in algebra, we're able to do it in Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, which again, is going to really help ensure that vertical alignment piece. Our math teachers, the other, a huge difference between this year's pilot of Carnegie and last year's is the level of professional support that Carnegie offers. We have a coach coming out tomorrow actually for a implementation training with the, there's 11 math teachers who will be involved in the pilot at the high school. And so they'll be working with that team of teachers tomorrow. They'll be back on our first early release day, which September 11th, I believe, is the first early release day. And so they'll be focused on really supporting how to get started with Carnegie. And then throughout the year, that, that coach will be coming back and working directly with the teachers. So we're really excited about that pilot. We recognize the importance of high quality instructional materials in conjunction with high quality instruction is really what leads to learning, high quality learning. So we're excited about that. That's, that's everything, I think.
Sure.
Yes.
So last Thursday and Friday, Mr. Tebow and I had the really great honor of welcoming seven new staff members to Dartmouth Public Schools. We spent Thursday and Friday doing our, Project Time is our teacher induction and mentoring experience. There is a requirement to do induction, but I think we really focus on trying to make it more than just a box to be checked. Um, we really look at the applicability of what their jobs are. We onboard them and do some of the Dartmouthizing of the way that we do things here. But also, um, all new staff members are paired with a mentor, who is someone, um, in a job alike across the district who's been trained as a mentor, who's been here for more than five years and is able to really help, um, I think, get them, set them up for success. And our goal is to have them not just want to stay here, but stay here for a long time, uh, and be successful in their journey here.
And we are, and they are excited to meet you all. I believe they're invited to the next school committee, uh, meeting. So they'll be here as we've done in the past, and we will, the nice thing about having a small group of seven, we can share a little bit more of their bios because it won't take as long. There's only seven new, uh, educators, but, um, they're a good group for sure.
I will say I was very humbled by the fact that two of the seven were in my fourth-grade class. So,
If you didn't mention it, I was going to.
But also felt extraordinarily old for the, for that little bit. But it's always, it's, I think it's such a credit to Dartmouth that we do have so many of our former students who want to come back here and give back to the community and be involved. And, I mean, it's, I think it's a tribute to the schooling that they received, um, to want to come back here and be a part of that. So, it's, um, as much as I laugh about feeling old, it also is really, I think, just, I'm full of pride for them and for the, for the district.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? I just wanted, I just wanna know what everybody did in their spare time. My god, thank you very much.
I did have a question. I'm sorry. Um, so, all these different programs had pilots, and not every class of every grade is doing it. Um, so surely we are, I just want to be clear, we're testing not only the pilot classes before the pilot starts, and we're testing the students who are using the old curriculum.
Yes.
And then we do that again at the end.
Yeah, so we have, uh, you know,
And what, what tests are we using?
Yep, so we look at our benchmark assessments that we would, um, typically use. So at the elementary level, we're looking at our DIBL scores, um, we're looking at STAR scores. We're looking at some of those benchmark assessments, but also, you know, each program has its own, um, assessment data that goes along with it. And so, um, really, at that point, it comes back to looking at standards, right? So what are our students doing in relation to the standards? Because that is, no matter what program you're using, right? A program is just a means to making sure that we're teaching students the standards. So when we're looking at standard-specific data, that's where you can start looking at a little bit more of the apple versus orange. And then, you know, we have the, the common assessments, which obviously we'll be looking at as well.
Okay, so, um, some of the individual programs have their own tests.
They do.
And do we just give those tests to the classes that are within that, um, project? Or are we, do we give it to?
Assessment more than test, I think I would use that phrase because I think, no, no, no. And the only reason I say that is it's not a traditional pen and paper test, right? So there is some project-based assessments that go along with some of this. There are some, there's lots of different ways for our kids to show their learning. And I think that's one of the, one of the other things that we talk a lot about when we talk about assessment is it's not just necessarily a paper pencil test, it's tasks that we're doing. So, um, you know, there are certainly trad- traditional assessments. When we talk about DIBL's data at the, at the elementary level, our kids are reading, we're looking at their phonemic awareness and their phone, right, their ability to kind of do all of those things. And that's a, that's common no matter what program our kids are using. So there'll be a mix of both. There'll be, um, you know, pro- programmatic assessments typically are at the end of a unit, and it's, did the unit cover what our kids are doing? So, we want to make sure that we're doing both. We're growing them across standards, um, and that they're learning what it is that we intend for them to learn.
The other thing that I just would mention is that I think is important is that the two resources, curriculums that Mrs. Paveo is talking about are, have already been vetted. So they've already gone through a process. And so every resource that Mrs. Paveo brought in to work with her team, curriculum, with the curriculum teams, was a resource that had already gone through a vetting process. And when I say that, I mean, it's a research-based resur- resource. So, we have confidence, and earlier you said, you know, confidence in DESI. And so some of the work that the Department of Education has done is they have really invested in identifying high-quality, research-based resources and not sort of force them on school districts, but instead said, here are the resources that we've looked at, here is, um, the resources that we vetted, and here, they, they've broken it down even by indicators so that you can see where each resource falls within a continuum. So these are resources that we're not experimenting with. They've already gone through a process.
But just making sure it works for us and our teachers and our students.
Yes.
And our particular situation.
So we have a curriculum adoption policy, right? And so part of that also is that our teachers are using, um, rubrics that they, that go through many criteria about, when we say vetted, right? So we're not just talking about, um, vetting to the standards. It's, we're looking at, um, making sure that it's free of bias, making sure that. So there are, there are many criteria that, as Dr. St. Maguire said, when you go through ed reports and curate are vetted, and then our teachers sort of find evidence of that for themselves as well.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope, not good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and we'll talk about this again, but it's no mistake that, um, that this is the number-one initiative under teaching and learning. And this is the number-one initiative not because we're so invested in it, because you can tell we're curriculum people and we get excited about curriculum, um, and we're educators, so that's a good thing. But this came from all across the school district, so, and, and you can see that that work has been happening. So, I thought I'd switch gears now and talk about an, our enrollment update. Kindergarten registration, believe it or not, continues to go on. I'm sure, that's a surprise. I think we registered two new kindergartners just today. Um, so right now, we're at one hundred eighty-seven kindergarten students. And that is, and I mentioned this last time, but I think it's important to note that that really is in line with, if you remember how we partnered last year with NezDek, had them come in, do an enrollment projection, and they had us right around a hundred and ninety students for, for this year. So we expect, uh, that they might just be right on point or really s- close to it. So, the, the good thing about that is, and, and you were, not the good thing, but you remember last year, there was, there was concern about the si- kindergarten class sizes and whether or not we were gonna add a kindergarten teacher. And we really did hold back because we were responding to the NezDek enrollment report, and we needed to be, um, we, we did need to really watch enrollment closely before we decided to add a teacher. Uh, so right now, our class sizes at the kindergarten level at the DeMello are, are right around eighteen, nineteen, um, nineteen at the Potter. And at the Quinn, we're a little bit lower, we're at about fifteen. Uh, so we're keeping, again, a close eye, like, but we're pretty close to school opening, so we're confident that our class sizes, excuse me, at kindergarten level will be very, uh, reasonable. And as a matter of fact, exactly where we'd want a kindergarten class to be. As far as overall total enrollment, we're, this is approximate. We're right around three thousand three hundred seventy-two students. And at the high school, uh, as of again, August, right now, uh, we're at nine hundred twenty-four students. And so, yes, we are seeing that our enrollment is being impacted somewhat, but at the same time, there is consistency and our expectations, at least, are, are making sense and in line with what NezDek has told us. So, I wanted to mention that. As far as HR updates, um, where are we? We're, we're in pretty good shape. Um, instruct, as far as district-wide positions, we're still looking for a behavior specialist, uh, B C B A. Uh, we're still looking for a maintenance worker. So we're still advertising, and if you know anyone, please encourage them to apply. At the high school, we still are in need of an instructional World Language teacher, Portuguese. We've had a couple of, um, you know, near hits, near misses, I should say. So we're still working on that, but the high school has a great plan in place to support those classrooms until we're able to find a full-time teacher. We also, at the high school, uh, are still in need of an EL teacher, English Language Learner teacher, who are, this teacher would be shared with, uh, the middle school. And we need three ESPs, I'm sure that's a surprise. Seems like a, you know, an ongoing challenge. We also are in need of a full-time custodian, uh, here at the high school. At the middle school, other than the EL teacher that they share with the high school, we're fully staffed. So that's really exciting, um, and I know Mr. Rossi is thrilled about that. At the Quinn, we are in, still in need of two, uh, ESPs and also a custodian. The Potter, fully staffed instructionally, uh, we are in need of a part-time custodian. At the Cushman, we are fully staffed, instructionally, and we are fully staffed with our non-instructional staff. So, we're in good shape, but as usual, you know, I'm going to say, we need monitors, we need lunch monitors, we need monitors, we need substitute teachers, you heard me mention ESPs, custodians, food service workers. So all of those positions, um, are positions that we are in continual need. So if you could just, um, if you, again, if you're listening and you know somebody who might be interested in one of those positions, please encourage them to apply. Now, climate and culture. So, boy, it has been a summer. Thank you, Mr. Nunes, for saying, how did we get all this done, right? So this past summer, uh, we had many meetings, we had retreats, uh, we engaged in three strategic planning meetings, which is why we were able to share that dashboard. That was something that we, we were invested in, and, and that was a goal, to have that done before the start of the school year, so we could at least launch it today. Uh, we had a cult retreat, a central office leadership, we had a principal retreat, and a district leadership retreat. Uh, I am really happy to say that the feedback that we've gotten about these professional learning opportunities have been really positive, and people have enjoyed participating in and can see the connection to the work that we're doing during that professional learning time and their work that they're doing every day. And we know how important that is for people to walk out of a professional learning experience and feel like they can apply it and make those connections to their everyday work. I do want to say, we're very grateful to UMass Dartmouth. Um, we were there for most of our summer meetings on campus. And the space really truly provides us a, uh, an opportunity to disconnect from our day-to-day work and engage in what we're invested in, which is that professional learning time that I talked about. That partnership with UMass Dartmouth, I'm really looking forward to continuing to strengthen. They, they were so good to us and, um, couldn't have been more welcoming and check- checking in on us and making sure we had all we needed to make those days successful. So please pass that on, yes. And, uh, convocation was this morning. I know we had a couple of school committee members that were able to join us. Um, I wanna thank Mr. Galishaw for, mm-hmm, for entertaining us. So, um, he did some stand-up for us. Uh, in case you didn't know, that, um, Mr. Galishaw might have, uh, second life as a stand-up comedian. And he also fulfilled his lifelong dream of hosting a Phil Donahue Show. And so he engaged, there were some great laughs, and, and yes, as he said to me earlier today, that, um, I had to, I didn't have to, I did have to wrangle the microphone from him. I did it very subtly, but he could have hosted a two-hour Phil Donahue Show, no doubt, and he was in his element. And we thank him because I know there was a lot of positive feedback from staff who really enjoyed it. And then I had to take over and do the serious stuff. So, um, that was fun, thank you, Mr. Galishaw, for that.
As it is, uh, it looks like he's, uh, taking phone calls in some kind of telethon. It's like the, the lot, the lines are open and,
Yeah.
Like to pledge twenty-five dollars, Mr. Galishaw.
That's what I think is going on, he might be getting hired. Somebody somehow has put his, uh, his audition tape out there. So what was really, it was really, parts of the convocation were really fun, though. And I want to say, like, the whole point of a convocation is to bring folks together and to, um, set the year off in a positive way. And that is the reason for a convocation. And I want to say there was a lot of great energy today. We were able to, uh, award our first-ever Green Apple Award. Um, and that's gonna be something that we'll talk about at a future meeting. But it went to Mr. Jeff Croker, um, for those of you who know him, he's been with the district for forty years. And also does some other work for us in the school district. In the summer, he doesn't take the summer off, instead, he paints. And so he was here at the high school, helping to beautify the hallways here at the high school. And so what was so, um, inspiring was the reception he got from his colleagues when we called him to the stage. So, yes, he got a standing ovation, and people were so excited for him and celebrating him. And we tied, and we will continue to tie, the Green Apple Award to our core values in asking colleagues to nominate one another in ways that they can see their colleagues' connection to exemplifying the core values of the school district. Uh, so that was, that was really, uh, I think, a highlight of, of today's, um, convocation. He started in nineteen eighty-four. And so what we found out is that he, he started the year Scarlett Johansson was born. Dr. Tebow was one, not quite one. Katie Perry was born that year, um, Prince Harry. Who was? Sam Madden, I didn't know that, but yeah. So it was, it was really fun to see some of the music that was popular, but he, he tried to duck out, I want you to know. He did try to duck out, and we found him and said, oh, no, come on in, come on up to the stage. So that was wonderful. So this year's convocation theme, if you remember last year, we talked a lot about, what is your why? And this year, we did, what is your why not? And so that was, thank you, Kate, Kate helped me as to figure that out as I was going through some possible themes for what the convocation, and this is what she said to me. I said, what is your why? She said, what is your why not? And I said, that's it, that's the theme. What is your why not? But people, I think, really connected to it, and what we did is we reminded people that there's no, there is no better, um, I don't want to call it an occupation, but there's no better, there's no more powerful commitment than you can have than being part of educating the youth of our community and really our world. And we closed out by giving, uh, an overview of the strategic plan. And then we wanted, again, to leave people with this feeling of fun and that this was uplifting, great start to the school year. So I had the idea of having a T-shirt cannon. I think it was either Mr. Kylie or it might have been Mr. Galishaw that said that they thought that that might be harmful, that perhaps the space wasn't large enough for a T-shirt cannon. And so Mr. Galishaw had the idea of inviting a few of our football players to the convocation. And what we did was I threw out the first T-shirt, I want you to know I did make it to the second row. And thought that was pretty good, and then we handed the T-shirts to the football players. Uh, we had our quarterback,
Jackson Hart.
Jackson Hart, and we also had Aiden. And, and you should have seen how far they can throw the T-shirts. I have a lot of hope for football this year. I think it was, it was really impressive to see, they were able to make it right to the top, to the back. So, yeah, that part was, that part was a lot of fun. And so all, to, I would say we had a really positive day today. We're looking forward to Wednesday, we're ready to go. Because, of course, that's the day where it all really starts, when our students return to school. So that is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Saban Maguire. Sounds like it was a very successful day.
It was fun.
And even more of a successful summer, so thank you to all of, uh, your team. Questions or comments? Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to piggyback on, uh, with Dr. Saban Maguire, you know, even in the cafeteria when they were having the refreshments beforehand type of deal, there's always energy, because, you know, there's a lot of talking and people you know, there's a lot of talking and people haven't seen each other for the summer and that, but there seemed, this year, for some reason, in a good way, to be a lot more energy. And it was, and it, and it just carried over into the auditorium with, you know, Mr. Galishaw and, you know, Dr. Saban McGuire's, you know. I was, one of the things Dr. Saban McGuire asked is, you know, you know, she had the new teacher stand up, which was very nice, and then she sat there and she said, okay, who's been here, you know, at least five years? And you got like 90% of the auditorium stands up type of deal, and went down the line, but the length of service of our teachers is, that is here, is, is just phenomenal, you know, for the most, they come and they stay, and that's, I think that's a testament to, to the district and to the, to the people that we hire, and that. So that, that was, you know, I think, that was the fro, for me, that was the frosting on the cake, when you see the number of people that are here, you know, and I give them, Mr. Coach, you know, at 40 years and such, so, you know. I mean, I had a couple of teachers that came in, and, you know, it's, how you doing? Do you have a good summer and that type of deal? And they're like, I'm starting 21 years, I'm starting 27 years. It's, it's just great, the energy that they bring.
Thank you for sharing. No?
So was my first convocation.
Ever.
And I will say, I believe the idea is to welcome and make our school community more of a community and more of a family, and I definitely felt that I felt that. And as it ended, and it was a great ending with the T-shirts and the music and all this, behind me, there was a fairly long-term staff member, teacher, and their comment was, I think that's the best convocation I've ever been to.
That's wonderful. Thank you for sharing that.
I think it, it really, it got everybody ready, you know, on the right foot. So thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Oh, that was, that was Mr. Galishaw who said that. No, you were on the stage at that point.
That's awesome. Next up, report of the chair. I really don't have anything, just looking forward to hearing how the first day of school goes. I will say that we do have our school committee workshop, that's going to be on September 17th at 5:30 at the central office. And we're, I know that in my last conversation with Dr. Saban McGuire, that she was working on, she was speaking with Glenn Kuchar from MASC, just to let him know what we're looking for, as well as, as a reminder from me, to just think about, as a school committee, what you would like to see as some of our goals for the upcoming school year, as a, as a school committee, because I think that's very important. I think that's something we haven't done in, in a while, and I'd like to see it, you know, get back on the tracks this year, so just keep that in the mind, keep, keep that on your mind in the back of your head.
Can I just mention one more thing? There was an article in the Boston Globe on Sunday, in the address in the real estate section, I actually meant to bring it in, I have it in my car, but Dartmouth is highlighted in the article, and it's about, I think, a pretty timely topic around how people make decisions about where they're buying homes and bringing up their families. And we had a Dartmouth resident, actually, just, it happened to be Mr. Hart, who lives here in town, who's a radio personality, and he talked about the draw back to Dartmouth and the nostalgia that brought him back here to raise his own family. His son was one of the students, one of the football players that was throwing the T-shirts out, and one of our, our quarterbacks. And then Mr. Christopher Foley's also quoted in the article, and it's, it's a great article, and I do think it highlights the importance of what we have to offer our community, our, our families who are looking to locate or relocate and bring their families up in certain communities, and Dartmouth was certainly highlighted in a really positive way.
No, thank you for sharing, that's very timely, for sure, and I think it goes without saying that if you ask any Realtor, it's one of the most important factors when purchasing.
Right on the front page of the address section of the Boston Globe.
Is the schools, for sure, 100%. Any other comments from the committee? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to kind of piggyback, and I was thinking about this, you were talking about the goals and, and that type of deal, and just wondering, you know, when you, and/or Dr. Saban McGuire, if you talked with Glenn, what does, does MASC have any, like, boilerplate goals that other committees have worked on and done? Just, you know, instead of us trying to like reinvent the wheel, sometimes there may be some out there, yeah, we could, we would have to tweak them, but, you know, somebody's done some of the legwork on it, and we just have to piggyback off of it, type of deal, just a thought.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I'll take that into consideration in discussions with the superintendent and Glenn, for sure. There may very well be some out there that we may, we might be able to tweak, but I think, and the, the other side of this is that it's, gives us an opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves is what's important specifically within the community.
No, understood.
But yeah, I, I agree, John, thank you.
Good deal. And then, the only other two things I've got, if you look at the Standard Times, they've started, and they're continuing to talk about both winter and spring athletes, we've had a couple of them, a number of our athletes have made, you know, the super teams, or one of our track players was, you know, just a few weeks ago was in as, you know, the outstanding, you know, track athlete in the, the spring season type of deal, so congratulations to them. And, you know, with school starting, sports and band are going ongoing, and it's not going to be long before we've got our first football game, you know, the band will be, you know, our first home football game, you know, band competitions and such, and all the co-curricular activities going on here, and, you know, it's, Mr. Shea is always, you know, you know, school doesn't end at 2:03.
That's right.
Type of deal, you know, you'll be here at, we'll be here at, you know, 8 o'clock at night, and it's still, you know, going gangbusters, so, it's always good to see.
No, certainly agreed, Mr. Nunes, thank you. And one of the things that should certainly bring up, it's worth mentioning, is we'd like to, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish our, our former Quinn School principal, Kyle, Mr. Kyle Granfield, the best of luck in his, his new role and position in another school system. He had an opportunity for growth, and he certainly took advantage of that, so we wish him nothing but the best, and we thank him for his time and service here at the Dartmouth Public Schools. We'd also like to mention that Dr. Audra Thomas will be assuming that role, stepping in as interim principal of the Quinn Elementary School. So we are certainly excited to, to have one of our longstanding assistant principals take on the reins of Quinn Elementary School in an interim capacity. So looking forward to welcoming her at one of the next school committee meetings.
Absolutely, and she's really already hit the ground running, so.
That's great.
It's a great fit.
Next school committee meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is scheduled for Monday, September 9th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. At this time, there is no executive session, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
On the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good night, everyone.
Good luck with school opening.